I'm going to call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon?
Here.
Councilor Weber?
Here.
Councilor Mo?
Here.
Councilor Rodley?
Here.
Councilor Blackwell?
Here.
Councilor Doyle?
Here.
And Councilor Pictionary?
Here, thank you. We have one item this evening, which is the 2024 risk report. With Jamie and Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jamie Iboa. I am the Risk Manager for the City of Springfield. I am here tonight to just kind of quickly run through the 2024 risk report, which is actually the second annual report so far. We're going to continue doing this every year. The risk report is really an opportunity for us to go through our claims experience across all lines of claims and insurance experience to help the organization see where our risks are. I point out, you know, kudos, things that are going well, but then also some things that we need to work on. And it's presented to the executive team. And then they're given the opportunity to ask for any additional follow-up that they might have based on a graph that they see. I'll tell you, I tend to talk really fast. So when I get excited, I forget to slow down. So if anybody needs me to slow down, let me know. And if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt. It's perfectly fine, won't break the flow. So the, there is a copy of the risk report in, of course, yes, here, here it is. I can't see it because I have my reading glasses on, but. So I start out with trying to give the, kind of the key findings, the things that really jumped out at me for the year. And that's what's contained on the first page. I should also back up a little bit and, and tell you, this is a five-year look back. It's really hard to do trending when you're looking at two, maybe three years, certainly one year, it doesn't work. So traditionally, in the risk management world, we look at a five-year window. And it is based on fiscal years. So this report will address FY20 through FY24. One of my favorite key findings, of course, is the wonderful work that the organization has done. And also in the police department has reduced, it, it has reduced our deductible with city-county insurance services. I don't know how many of you were here before, but in FY21, the police department's deductible went up to $250,000 from $100,000 due to some negative claims experience. And then in FY22, it actually increased to $500,000 and we were running the risk of losing our coverage with CIS. But due to the efforts that have been made in FY24, the deductible dropped back down to 250. And for the current fiscal year, FY25, it has dropped down to 100,000, which is the same as the rest of the organization. So that is some great news. I won't obviously read through every single thing here in the report, since you guys have it. But another thing I want to point out here is, for the third year in a row, the fire department has not had any general liability claims. So that's good. And general liability claims, moving on to page two. General liability claims are those, oh, I forgot, I have the clicker, sorry.
I got you.
Thank you, Chain. That's why he's here. He's going to be my, my sidekick. So general liability claims are those claims involving bodily injury or property damage to others caused by city employees or city vehicles. So that's what page two shows. Starting with FY20, you can see that we have had a downward trend in our general liability claims. We go from 31 to 18, back up to 26, down to 24, and then down to 20. So that's about 119 claims over a five-year fiscal period. It may seem like a high number, but based on our operations and the amount of staff we have, it's really not a lot of claims. And out of those 119 claims, 56% of those closed without any payment being made. So these are claims that were denied, were not appealed, or, you know, no lawsuit was filed. And then as of the writing of this report, which I, I run the data through the end of FY24. So this data is current as of 6/30. Anything that happened since then, we'll see it on next year's report. So as of June 30, out of those 119 claims, only 11 remained open. So CIS is doing a good job of, of getting these processed and we get them closed quickly. So that's good. One of the things that you'll notice here, you know, this significant dip from FY20 to FY21. Right around that time, in FY21, of course, is when Chief Shearer started here with our organization. So that has had some effect on, of course, the reduction in claims. But also right around that same time, the organization started really looking into and participating in what we call enterprise risk management, which is different from traditional risk management because traditional risk management is more of a reactive approach to risk management, whereas enterprise risk management is looking to the future, taking in others in the organization to participate in that and trying to figure out what risks do we have and how can we prevent them from happening versus reacting to when they happen. Some other interesting information on this slide. You can see that, you know, there, there are going to be claim years where maybe one claim or a couple of claims are really going to spike the graphs. And you'll see that in general liability claims total incurred. Total incurred is what we have paid out on a claim, what we have set aside, or what CIS has set aside that they think the claim will cost us, and that total together is total incurred. So that's what we're looking at. So for closed claims, it's what did we pay? For any claims that are still open, it's paid plus what our reserves are. And unfortunately, in FY21, 98% of that total is due to litigated claims. And so those are claims that are currently still open. They're still being litigated as of the time of this report. And 98% of that total incurred is what have we paid, which is mostly attorney fees right now because we haven't settled any of those claims, and then what we have reserved to pay for them. So that's what that is. Since the writing of, or, or since the reports for this report in FY21, one of those litigated cases closed. So that number dropped by about $200,000. So, next.
Yeah, and I just want to call out real quickly too. So during that period, of course, when Nancy came on board, was right around FY20 into the pandemic, and a good chunk of the expenses we've seen in FY21 were kind of tied into that. And it really was the leadership of the city manager who championed allowing HR to really get enterprise risk in place. So at that time, before that, Tom and I really struggled to kind of get any progress and movement. And it was really Nancy that was able to get us to drive over that hump and get the work going that we ended up getting completed.
And, and that, that is tremendous. I have been taking classes and studying and learning about enterprise risk management for many years, as, as well as Tom. And one of the things that I find when I meet with my peers, they talk a lot about how they cannot get their leadership to buy into enterprise risk management. And, well, don't you have the same problem? And I said, absolutely do not, because our city manager is very much behind it. And they're very, very surprised about it. And they always ask, how did you do that? I can't take credit for it. So anyway, it, it is, it is great to have that support. So. General liability claims by department. This is going to break it down more for you as far as the, the bigger, the bigger chunks of claims, those are the departments you're going to see. And that's going to be the Department of Public Works, Police, and Fire. The rest of the city departments, Finance, HR, CMO, CAO, and Library. I lump those into other because it really skews the graphs when you have several that have zero and several that have one. And so that's, you know, that's how I set those graphs for it. And as you can see, under the fire bars, there are no claims for the last three fiscal years, which is incredible. Down below, of course, is total amount incurred by department. So it's that same, those same numbers from the general liability claims total incurred, but split out by department. Next. So auto liability claims, citywide, is the next graph. And the auto liability claims are for damages to people, to other people's property or bodily injuries caused by a city auto. So city employee, obviously, driving a city auto injured somebody else.
You think about the ice storm. One of the things that popped out when I hit the auto liability portion. Did we have any auto liability claims from the ice storm?
Yes. So if we drop down to, so that was in FY24. 88% of the total incurred for auto liability claims, which wasn't a lot of money. It was only 17,455. 88% was due to the ice storm.
So a single event, right?
It was actually three separate events, that 88%. Percent, yeah. So one of them was a vehicle stopped in the middle of the road because somebody was in front of them and officer could not stop in time. And rear-ended that vehicle. A fire truck slid off the road and took out a chunk of fence. And then another one, the bucket of one of the engines or one of the fire apparatus. There was a business down here at Fifth and Centennial, I think. Their wires were hanging down low and it got wrapped up into the bucket and pulled the wires off. So that's what those ice or storm-related claims were. You know, anything else, I, you know, I broke down for the five-year period. There were only 13 claims. Four were DPW, three were police, and six were from fire. And only as, as of June 30, only one of those claims remained open. Next. Auto physical damage claims. These claims are for damage to our auto. It can be our staff damaging our auto or somebody else damaged our auto and CIS is in, trying to pursue recovery against the other person. We do try very hard to recover anything and everything that we can on these claims. Unfortunately, sometimes people don't have insurance and so it just takes a little longer. But we've had, you know, you can see on the graph here. Our biggest year was FY23. There were actually nine. But for as many autos as we have, that's really not a significant, significant amount of auto physical damage claims. In FY24, the breakdown of that, the $115,404, 31% was basically, I didn't see a vehicle coming and I pulled out in front of them. 28% was due to an officer was blocking Mohawk when they had that water main break. And for whatever reason, somebody didn't see him and just plowed into the side of him. And we are pursuing on that. But unfortunately, our damages were well over $30,000 and this gentleman only has $25,000 in liability or liability coverage. So sometimes we don't get everything back, but we get what we can. 34% of those costs were for damages to our vehicles that, that were damaged during the ice storm. And then 7% was due to a pit maneuver, you know, as part of, of what our officers sometimes have to do. Workers' comp. So workers' comp, I try not to get too far down into the weeds because based on the number of employees we have, the number of claims we have isn't a significant amount. And we do try to respect and honor our employees' confidentiality and privacy when it comes to medical issues. And so I'm a little bit careful about giving out too much in, in the reports so that people can't be identified. But like I said, this isn't a significant amount of claims. Of course, we saw a spike in '21 and '22 because of COVID. In 20, FY21, six police and 12 fire claims were COVID-related. And then in FY22, five police claims and 18 fire claims. And it's kind of dropped. We don't see them very often anymore in the most recent couple of years. So that, that did affect that claims experience. Otherwise, our, our, you know, numbers would be quite, quite a bit lower. As far as the workers' comp total claim, total incurred, it's the same as general liability. It's paid plus reserves. In FY24, just a few claims, like I mentioned earlier, can really drive the costs and the, and the spikes in the graphs. And a good example in FY24, three claims are, account for 69% of the total incurred in claims. So just a few claims can really spike that number up. And you'll see that in FY21. One claim contributes to 75% of the total cost for that year. And this is another good example of trying to maintain the confidentiality of employees. This one has been marked a privacy case. OSHA defines privacy for us as being a needle stick, injury to intimate parts, sexual assault, mental illness, or some kind of bloodborne pathogen contracted illness. And it was, that claim was one of those privacy cases. So it, you know, it caused that big spike. Otherwise, we tend to kind of generally be, you know, 346, 282, and 383 in FY20. It's been pretty consistent. And then, of course, on the next page, I break it down by department. Clicker for me, thank you. It's broken down by department. So you can see, obviously, again, the, the other category is those that have very, very few claims. And then we get into Public Works, Police, and Fire. And that's where you're going to see more claims, obviously, due to the nature of what they do. And kind of to break it down a little bit more, one of the things that I found in the last couple of years that the most commonly injured body parts are wrists and hands. A lot of times, it tends to be the low back, but here it's the wrists and hands, using tools and equipment, and arrest injuries. We've, we've seen quite a few injuries there. Shoulder claims don't happen that often. They're only 5% of the total number of claims over the reporting period, but they have the highest average cost incurred because those tend to have to, they, they result in surgery. So we're going to see the cost on those higher. The, the strains and sprains, of course, as is common nationwide, is the most common type of injury. So versus a fracture or a dislocation or something like that, sprains and strains are the most common. Let's see.
Something else to kind of mention is with the pandemic was the great resignation. And so when you factor in the number of new staff that have been on board and the number of overtime hours that Police and Fire had to work while we were going through that staffing transition, the fact that we saw the decline in workplace injuries is really something that should be positively reflect, really, the leadership of those groups.
Yeah. Yeah. And another thing I'll point out is the most common cause of injury are arrest injuries. But it was wonderful to see over the last, over the reporting period, that it has been decreasing. Starting in FY20, there were 15, then 11, then four, then it went up to seven in FY23, and then dropped back down to five in FY24. So that's an important thing to point out, I think, for the police department. Okay, experience modifier. This thing is complicated. If, if you know numbers and you like numbers and the, you might enjoy this. But it is very complicated. But I feel like it's important to point out because the experience modifier combined with our payroll is what dictates our workers' compensation premiums. And so the lower the experience modifier, the lower the, the premium is. And so what it, what is considered normal or average is one. And as you can see here, it's been gradually dropping to where in FY25, we already have FY25 numbers, of course. And I try to include more than just the five years because it, it does tell a good story. Our experience is below average. So we're not having as many claims filed as other organizations similar to us, which, like I said, means a reduction in workers' compensation premium.
Which is based on total hours worked, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's the important factor to this is we're positively progressing and we've had a lot of overtime hours. And the fact that we're still below one is amazing.
Yes. Yeah. And every, every job that we have is, is calculated differently. Police and Fire, of course, we pay a higher workers' comp rate for them because of the nature of what they do versus office workers. We pay a less rate. I think Fire is up to $9 and something, whereas for us, it's a couple of dollars. So it, it, it does differ on the job. Another thing that I think is important, because I did mention that we do try to pursue wherever we can recovery of those taxpayers' dollars when it comes to claims. One of the things that we do is we participate a lot in the Employer Injury Program. Everybody's paycheck gets some money taken out of it that goes into this state, state-run pot. They want us to use it. And so we do. If we have an employee who is on modified duty, light duty, they're not able to do their regular job, they get their regular wage. But as an incentive for employers to provide light duty, we get half of their wage returned to us for a period of 66 calendar days. So along with, if, if there's some kind of equipment or modification we can make to their work site, then the state will give us up to $5,000 to help pay for that. So we've taken advantage of that quite a bit, too. So over the last five fiscal years, just for the wage subsidy, we've received $243,000 back. So, and we use that money. We call it the Injury and Loss Prevention Grant. If there's something that in the department, one of the department's needs, we'll help them fund that. A recent example is it's known that motorcycle officers have a greater level of hearing loss from being out with that wind and noise. And we were able to help them purchase different windshield that significantly reduces the noise exposure that they receive. So it's things like that, that, that we work with the departments on. And then premiums by line of coverage. So this is again FY20 through FY25, because we recently just had our FY25 renewal year. You can see I've listed out the cost of the premiums for each of our insurance lines. But then above, it's also been graphed out so you can kind of see the way it goes. We don't really have a lot of control over the property line item, obviously, because there's a lot of disasters and things going on in the world and that dictates our increases. We reach out at budget time to our broker, like, you know, I recently did, to find out what, what can you tell us? Pull out your crystal ball, what do you think's going to happen? So for FY26, they're predicting a 15%, at least 15% increase. So we factor all of that in. And so it, you know, the, the graph probably doesn't surprise you much, except for the workers' comp graph. The green line, the one on the top, and when it dips down in FY22, that is when the, the city made the decision to go to safe preparation. And so that has been, it's been great for us. They, they, they manage claims well. Not saying CIS didn't, they managed them well as well. But the premiums are significantly us. And it's a guaranteed cost program. So we're not having to pay out money all the time to, we pay our premium and we're done. So that is all I had, but I am definitely open to any questions.
Hey. So I have some questions, but they may not be directly related to this, but they are risk.
Okay.
Questions. Okay. So lower claims equals lower rates, right? There tends to be like lower deductibles and that sort of thing. Is that correct? Like the less claims you have, the...
Yeah, not necessarily, because they're looking at the severity of the claims as well. And that's kind of that experience modifier where I was talking about. It's very complicated. They go back four years. They look at the first three of those four years. And if you've had a lot of little tiny claims, it doesn't really mean as much as if you have a couple of big ones. So it's also based on severity, not just frequency.
So I guess I would say if you have, okay. But more claims, it, it looked like because of the claims we had, like in '20 and '21, we had higher, we had this risk of losing our insurance and all.
Correct.
Okay. Have we had any type of claims in, in the development field, like faulty planning, construction, engineering, those type of claims?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I know we haven't since I started. And then the last few years before I started, since I've been doing this report, I have not seen any.
Okay. So I had come to you and to the attorney and talked to you guys about professional liability and the amount that we're charging our engineers to work for us. I thought we had resolved it. It sounds like we have not. All we did was just change the date of when they have to actually carry that professional liability. But we are requiring our engineers to carry $2 million per occurrence and a $3 million aggregate, the engineer. So we, they don't do that in Eugene. They don't do that up the road, up I-5. It's, it's this thing that I haven't seen other municipalities do. And I thought, okay, well, we must have had some claims, but it sounds like we haven't. And so we're, what we're doing is we're creating a situation where the only people that can bid on jobs in our town are KPFF, branch engineering, big giant firms. The smaller engineering firms, they can't afford to do a $150,000 PIP because they have to carry a $2,000 a year extra policy because of the cost of this. And no one can tell me why, other than that's what we charge and that's what we were, it was recommended that we do. And I think we need to take a look at this because what we're doing is we're excluding smaller engineers and it's costing our constituents more money because then they can't find someone who's reasonable. They have to go to a big giant firm to be able to do a small extension of a wastewater line because they're building, you know, they're partitioning their land. And so I'm asking again publicly that we take consideration of this.
And I don't think, do you have an answer for this?
I asked if it was okay to talk about this and they told me that it was.
No, no, no. I, I, I understand that piece. I just don't know that this is the, this is the...
This is rhetorical. It was, let's have this conversation because...
The, the issue with the engineers, so anybody who's required to have, you know, continued education and has licenses, doctors, lawyers, architects, engineers, they potentially can mess up, not in a way where, you know, our vehicle hits somebody else's vehicle, but in a design flaw. For, for the engineers, for example. If an engineer carries general liability insurance and they don't carry professional liability and they do a job that is flawed due to their design, if an acclaim, or if an event were to happen or a claim were to be filed against the city because it's now the city's infrastructure and it was due to a design flaw, their general liability coverage is not going to cover it. And so it would be up the, up to the city to pay for the claim.
Except for the fact that we also charge them for the city's engineers to review those same things. And in many cases, the city decides what they have to design. So they're building it based on what our code is. So they're doing what we're telling them to do. And it's not like they're going out and like creating some new thing that we've never heard of before. It has to go through a rigorous process through our system. And so basically, what we're saying is we're not going to take any responsibility for the fact that we review those plans or the fact that they have a professional license that means a lot, that's their stamp. So we have engineers that stamp stuff and they engineer stuff. But on top of that, now we're going to make them do this. And you just said yourself that you haven't seen any of those claims. And so I'm just asking the, what we're, the amount that we're doing, I'm not saying they shouldn't carry it. I'm saying what we're asking of these people is a, is a barrier and it is creating situations in our community that are costing other people money. And I need to know why.
Right.
We shouldn't just do it just because it's been in the code.
Right. No. And I can only speak to, of course, the, the insurance coverage that we want them to have, the, the professional liability. And I sometimes have people ask, well, if, if the contract is only a $10,000 contract, why are we requiring them to carry $2 million? The issue isn't how much was the contract. The issue is what could potentially happen if there were a design flaw? And public entities are, are protected by the tort claims statute, the cap, which is over 1.7 million right now. And so we need them to cover at least that amount so that we aren't spending taxpayer dollars to pay for a claim that really was not due to our negligence or our design flaw. The other parts of it, of course, is something that I, I wouldn't be able to speak to.
Sure. Because I mean, we can plan for, if a meteor hits the city, we want to make sure, you know what I'm saying? Like it's, it's also has to do with like, what's the, what's the likelihood? And what are we seeing potentially in all of that, too? So.
Nancy, do you have, have insight here?
I, well, well, for one, I appreciate raising the issue because we certainly don't want to have an unintended consequence. But I think what I need to do is do some more research around. I was just talking to Christine, like, hey, is there a legal question here in front of us? Is this a, you know, I want to get into more of the root of the requirements based on how we work with CIS and our overall. So I don't know enough to know to answer that.
The problem is that I already brought this up a year and a half ago. And I did go with legal and I met with them twice. And now we're having the conversation again. So this is one of those situations that I'm a little frustrated with because now you're saying, let's go do this research. And I'm like, we already had this conversation a year and a half ago. And I thought it was resolved, so.
Well, so I think Jamie explained it pretty well when I, I just was able to go back and pull up the correspondence from a year ago. And the, there's a difference, as Jamie explained, between general liability coverage and professional liability coverage. So previously, we required engineering, engineers who work on public improvement permits. So these are not contracts the city directly holds. These are permits that people come in to design and build infrastructure that then transfers to the city. We had required those engineers to carry general commercial liability coverage, business liability coverage, in addition to professional liability coverage. And going back and looking at, you know, what are we requiring? And working with Jamie, it was, it, and our insurer, CIS, we realized we were really unnecessary to charge, to not charge, to require general commercial liability coverage for engineers. And so I believe, I don't have Stan Petrov, the city engineer, with me, but I believe we removed that requirement in 2023. So now what remains is the requirement that engineers have professional liability coverage. And those amounts are correlated to the Oregon Tort Claims Act. So I was not personally, and I do want to say I was on parental leave for the last couple of months. I know this issue has come up while I was on leave. I, I was not aware that there was more additional issues with the professional liability coverage, which is a different type of a coverage than the general commercial liability. So that will take some more follow-up and investigation. And I'm also not aware of what other jurisdictions do on the professional liability.
It's complicated. It's complicated. We'll take two seconds to have an answer. I think we all understand that. Go ahead, Nancy.
I, I would just suggest perhaps if we could do a council briefing memo from the city attorney's office to address, one, to double check on, on the requirements as they presently are. And if there's anything that we have an obligation to with our contractual relationship with CIS that would be pertinent here.
Could you also include, just if, if our position or staff's position is that this is all racked, right? This is, you know, the, the way that they're suggesting we do business, can we explicitly call that out? Because I'm, I'm assuming that's going to be relevant to some of Victoria's questions. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Those are good questions and I, they deserve answers. But in your answer, you're talking about getting the information back, whatnot. If you could, I think would be additionally helpful with the information you just spoke about is if you could include comparators and if you had, you know, not a bunch, you don't have to do hundred city research. But it would be good, I think, for if council is at a position where they need to make a decision bait on this topic, that if they had that information and that, to take it one step further, if there's enough time or if you have the ability to, I don't know, know why you wouldn't, is if you find another entity that doesn't, is reach out and ask them how and why, how can they, how can they get away with that? You know, I mean, how can they, how can they do that? Cause there may be something small or something, something major that we're missing and that would enable us to make us more compatible or more, more competitive.
Cause you were with Eugene too, right? Were you, were you at the city of Eugene? Okay. So then you might have some people to ask. So, okay, awesome. Thank you.
That'd be great for all of them.
Very much for letting me have that conversation. I know I just kind of butted that in with everything else. I was like, ooh, risk, we can talk about this. So thank you very much.
So yeah, that, that'd be great.
All right. Any other questions?
Mine's a little simpler than that.
Of course.
So I did notice the downward trend in the number of claims and the upward trend in the, the actual cost being incurred by those claims. And I've heard overtime and some other factors that are playing into that. And we've had that conversation about overtime before. So are we at a place yet where we're able to downward trend overtime? Or are we still kind of up in that higher space there?
So there's multiple units. So I believe, looking at chief, the police has really got to a staffing point where they expect that to, to drop down. And then we, on top of that, successfully navigated some contract language to help that. So we, I would anticipate that we would see that. Fire, I believe, is still working through upstaffing that they need to do that kind of got delayed. And so my understanding from talking to Chief Kavan was that they anticipated by the, I think by the end of this fiscal year that they'd be at a staff level or they would be able to reduce overtime. Now, that doesn't take into account what would happen with fire season and some of those other details. But we seem to be, what I've been noticing in the data that I polled is that we've been in a heavy group that seems to be declining and our turnover rate has dropped last fiscal year below 10%. And so get considering the size of hiring that we have and to see that lower and that turnover is a positive indicator.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I do want to, you know, when we talk about fire, you know, it's, it's complicated. Cause we have two different cities with two different budgets, two different processes. I would say on the city of Springfield side of things, the city has done well and the council has done well to make investments to try to make hires in the fire department. So we don't have the, the lag that is being described in the city of Eugene. We also have, we, paramedics going, you know, we split off a single role program. That was an innovative approach that Chief Kavan started. And so we have seen an increase in people that have interest in being paramedics. And we also have some, some fire academy graduates that are, that are going through the process and should be wrapping up very imminently. So I think we will be able to move the needle on that in the upcoming year.
Okay. Can I just ask a follow-up? So, so for police and fire, I understand that. I'm looking at workers' compensation and that looks to have gone up about thirty-seven thousand from last year. It's not, what is?
A, a lot of that is going to be, of course, due to increased cost, medical costs. And then another big part of that is the most recent two fiscal years, it kind of takes claims a while to develop. And so there's quite a few claims there that are still open, that are holding not only monies paid out, but also those reserves. And when the claim is finally completed, their medical stationary, they're done treating, then the claim closes and those reserves drop off. However, under Oregon workers' comp statute, benefit, medical benefits are lifetime on claims. So they could reopen at, at any given time. But for now, the last two fiscal years, they're still developing is the short answer. They're developing.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see anybody else. This is, thank you so much for coming and sharing this information. I know liability has been a topic of conversation around this community the last couple of years and the work is definitely noticed and appreciated. Go ahead, Nancy.
I'm sorry. I know you all want to go. I just wanted to thank Jamie and Shane specifically. They are so talented at this work and it's a real passion. You can just tell with Jamie, I love how she just wants to go after getting that money back and getting every dollar she can for our, for our residents and saving every taxpayer penny we can. And that is, this is real money. When we do enterprise risk management, this is real savings to our community. And that's, I'm so passionate about that. So thank you for both of you.
Yeah. And it really is a group effort. I, you know, I'm certainly not going to take all the credit. You know, others in HR that work on claims as well are passionate about it. And then it helps when across the city, other staff will report to us, oh, I saw this happened or I saw that happen. And they let us know. So sometimes we don't even know there's damage. And so they let us know and then we can start pursuing, you know, who did that kind of thing. So it is a, a team effort.
You mentioned enterprise risk management.
Yes.
Gordon Graham?
He's wonderful. He can be.
So he's the, you know, the inventor of that term or that statement, if it's predictable, it's preventable. And so I would, I mean, I think it is so worth, and chief, you've seen or heard of him before, have you not? Yeah. That, that training that I've had with that attorney has been, has stuck with me my entire life. And if our folks haven't gone through that, I would highly recommend at some point, I think it would save the city money if staff went through his program that he puts together to allow people to get that in their mindset, because people don't walk around like that.
Yeah. No, he, he is, he is very good and he's a very dynamic speaker.
Amazing. He's a good friend.
Yeah. No, he's awesome.
Awesome.
All right. You're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good day.